I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, welcome everybody, thank you for coming. Want to go ahead and take attendance?
President Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Present.
Secretary Summers here, Treasury Hanser.
Present.
And Trustee McDonough.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
And Trustee Whitney, currently absent, on his way.
Okay, changes to the board agenda.
It's not a change to the agenda in front of you, but it's a change to the posted agenda, which we reposted this afternoon. Today, in reviewing the contents of the letter that's going to be presented to you tonight, it was determined that there's really nothing in it that requires a closed session, and so the decision was made to have the discussion in open session.
Okay, great, thank you. Board of Education matters. So, do you want to have Ron come up and talk first, or?
I think so.
Okay, I think so too.
That's welcome.
Good, there he is.
So, you know, we have with us tonight Ronald DeWort of Varnum, and he would be able to speak to.
He can present first, but before we have discussion, we should have a motion.
Right. Can present kind of what he's bringing to you on the board, and then, yes, Mary, our parliamentarian is very right, then we can do question, answer, and discussion after the motion's on the floor.
So, I'd like to introduce Brad DeWort here, and he's going to kind of go from there.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board today. There are some things that I think we welcome the open session, and we can have a dialogue on these, and also bring some clarity to what you have for you. There were some issues, as we understand it, that arose at certain points in the community regarding particularly the independence of the investigation. And so, what you have is a letter of understanding that GuidePost and Varnum jointly are submitting to you, and both parties have signed it, Andy O'Connell, the president of GuidePost, has signed for GuidePost, and I've signed for Varnum, in which we attempt to address some of the issues that arose with regard to the contract that was entered into between Varnum and GuidePost as part of the engagement to do the work of the independent review. Just to give a little context here, when the independent review, when Varnum was engaged, the way that it was going to occur at the request of the board was through an attorney-client privileged investigation review, and there were several reasons for that. I'm not going to get into attorney-client privilege here today, but I'll just say that, you know, one of the central reasons that was obvious to everyone was because there was pending civil litigation, and the hope was that the investigation could move forward unfettered and not be stymied by subpoenas and the like from civil litigation. And so, that's why it was set up that way, and I think that was a good decision because we didn't face subpoenas, because they would have been ineffective with the way the investigation was done. The engagement with Varnum included within it the indication that Varnum would be hiring GuidePost to work as part of the investigative team, ultimately to do the laboring, most of the laboring ore on the investigation, and ultimately lead it. And that was done with a contract that, between Varnum and GuidePost, that was fairly bare-bones purposely, has a lot of standard language in it, best practices language to protect the privilege, and that's why that contract was written the way it was. It was at the, with the authority of Tom Donnelly, indicating that the board had provided authority, was signed on his behalf principally for the reason of the board agreeing that it would have financial responsibility for GuidePost's bills, invoices, and not Varnum. There's some other items in there as well that relate to the district, and most of those, again, are standard financial terms like indemnity and things of that matter. So, that was the, how the board was involved with that contract, but it was a contract that essentially was just between, for the most part, in substantive terms, between Varnum and GuidePost. And so, this, what you have before you today is a letter of understanding, which we believe will clear up any issues that arose out of that contract, and in particular, what we'd like to stress is the independence of the review. The review has always been completely independent from the board and from the district. The board, as those of you who have been on the board since the beginning of the review, has never been briefed, has never been reported to, has never received information on the results of the investigation, on what the findings were, of where the progress was in terms of the findings, never has that occurred. The only discussions with the board have been on legal issues that have been attorney-client protected, that relate on subject matter, say process, cooperation, documents, things of that nature, but it has always been independent. And very early on, in the review, when the issue arose as the independence of GuidePost, there was a statement with the agreement of Varnum put out on GuidePost's website that made clear that ultimately, when a report was generated, that report would be in the control of GuidePost, that the language in the report, statements in the report, would not be influenced by any other parties, whether it's the district, the board, or Varnum. And that was made, and we just clarified that in the understanding, the letter of understanding, which clarifies it's agreed that GuidePost will have control over the language, the conclusions, the contents of the report, the ultimate report, and without influence from Varnum, from the board, and from the district, and that's in there. We also understood that an issue arose in the community with regard to whether there would be more than one report. There's not going to be any more than one report. This final report is, there's not going to be a report for the board and a report for the community, there's a single report, and as was said previously in the statement made by GuidePost near the beginning of the review, that report will be released to the board, this is at the board's direction, as you know, will be released to the board and the public at the same time. There won't be one provided early to the board, they will be released at the same time. There's some other elements of the letter that, you know, I could handle in questions if you have them, but just generally, an issue arose as to, as we understand it, as to destruction or not maintaining certain records relevant, or that occurred in the investigation, came, arose in the investigation. That's best practices, and so, in this letter of understanding, we wanted to outline what GuidePost and Varnum intended to do in that regard, and it's common that the party doing the investigation would maintain interview memorandum that was put together as part of the investigation, would generally maintain for a period of time certain documents relative to the investigation, and we've set that forth here. But things that would not be maintained, and won't be maintained, are, you know, individual notes of investigators that nobody could really read or understand, would just give rise to issues that are unnecessary. The position of the investigative team, GuidePost in particular, is going to be in the report, so notes wouldn't be maintained, internal communications among the investigation team would not be maintained, there's certain records, you know, to the extent there could even claim that they were covered by FERPA, those would not be maintained, things that are exempt from the Michigan Freedom of Information Act would not be maintained, and there are a number of documents that were received through cooperation with the prosecutor's office that we're very grateful for, and those are held subject to confidentiality agreement, so those would not be maintained either, and that's outlined in the letter. The final point I guess I would make here, in connection with the letter, is the date in which GuidePost has committed to issue the final report on or before. Every effort will be made to issue it before this date, but the date that GuidePost is indicating or comfortable is on or before October 30th of this year. And in that regard, I'd like to say, it's just so important, given the importance of this to the community, to the families, to the district, that this report be done with the utmost respect, careful attention, and that it just not have mistakes from being rushed, and the investigations of this type often take over a year. There are literally tens of thousands of documents that were involved, there were well over 100 witnesses who were interviewed. Information was obtained, a great bulk of information, from criminal investigations with a confidentiality agreement with the prosecutor's office that has huge volume in terms of evidence and documents, police reports, things of that nature. And then, there's been the civil litigation, in which we've had access to the depositions and the pleadings, there's hundreds of pages of depositions and testimonies, so there's a lot of testimony, a lot of documents, a lot of synthesis that had to occur, there's a lot of review of policies, all of those things coming together, both before, at the time of the shooting, and after the response of the shooting, that have made this a complicated, but yet doable investigation. Although it did take time, October 30th is the date that are comfortable saying, that is the date for sure it will be issued. Also, recently, the team received information, as many people saw on the news, about the Miller hearing, and we received that information, transcripts of the Miller hearing, we've also asked for additional information with the prosecutor's office, that they've committed just today to gather and provide to us quickly, and we received fairly recently additional documents that were requested from the district. So, there is materials that currently are being part of this and are being looked at and being fit into those conclusions and analysis. And finally, at the end, before the report's issued, because there was information that was obtained confidentially and with agreement with prosecutor's office, we are going to allow the opportunity for some review of the report before it's issued by the prosecutor, because to the extent that evidence is referenced, if it would cause with some issue with a criminal prosecution, we want to give them ability to tell us what that would be, to tell GuidePost what that would be, and perhaps it can be modified in some way. Not the conclusions, but if there's a reference to evidence that is somehow, in their view, could give rise to issues in criminal prosecution, given their willingness to provide us with that information, and the circumstances and the obligations we have in connection with our agreement, we need to allow that to occur. That can be done, we believe, fairly quickly, but it is something too that adds into this October 30th date, as the date by which GuidePost is confident they can provide the report, if not before. So, those are the comments I'd like to provide to you, and stand ready to answer questions you might have about these matters.
I have some questions. We can, we get to motion first, and I can do that. Motion to consider the letter of understanding from Varnum LLP and GuidePost Solutions LLC as presented by Varnum.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
So, I want to go back a little bit, on this letter, it says that the engagement agreement, which is the one signed by GuidePost, Varnum, and Tom Donnelly on behalf of the board.
Is it this one?
Correct.
This one?
Yep. There was, there was no vote on that, and the rest of the board hadn't seen it.
Are you talking about the one on May 24th? This one right here.
May 26, 2022.
The one that the Blakes gave to us.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So, could you explain to me, because it says in here that it was for the purpose of acknowledging the board's payment obligation, but there's approximately 12 instances where it says client agrees to, and the client being the Board of Education, and it is outside of strictly financial, and at the end, it also says it has been reviewed, and its terms are agreed upon and accepted by yourself, Tom Donnelly, and GuidePost.
Yes.
But if that wasn't approved by the board, what does that mean?
Well, in terms of whether there's a meaning to the board, I'm not here to give legal opinions on that, but, you know, whether the effectiveness of having it signed with Tom Donnelly's authorization, what I would say to you is, this ordinarily was an agreement between just Varnum and GuidePost, but in this situation, because of the financial considerations, it was a principal reason why it was requested that Tom Donnelly provide authorization to indicate that the board was in fact going to take care of the financial terms of the agreement with GuidePost. Now, there are some other things, standard language, I would say, that do reference the client being Oxford School District, but I think most of those could be grouped under financial considerations like indemnification, there's a few other, you know, fairly standard terms, like no conflicts of interest, things of that nature. In terms of how the information about the contract, which ordinarily would be kept into the files just of Varnum as an attorney-client privileged document, the engagement with GuidePost, in terms of those, how that was conveyed, I don't feel I should get into that here, to the extent that's attorney-client privileged communications, I will indicate though that there was authorization received in writing to sign it on behalf of Mr. Donnelly, from Mr. Donnelly. There also, ultimately, it was decided by the district in an effort at transparency, again, to turn this contract over in response to a Freedom of Information Act request, and so, it was provided then from Varnum's files to the district, the district didn't have it, so the district had the ability to object, but in transparency to turn it over, because as I said, it's essentially a standard engagement that, it was made very clear early on that GuidePost was going to have the final say on the report, and now we're making that even more clear in the letter of understanding. But if your question was, is or was, is it legally effective, I don't think it's appropriate for me to address any legal advice in this open session, but I would say, I don't think there's anything in the provisions that the board was agreeing to, indemnification, payment of terms, that I believe the board would have any objection to today.
Can I request that we seek a second legal opinion on this?
Like, outside of Varnum?
Yeah.
So, I do have a question then to that, is what, what are you, what are you looking for here, what are you going for, because, I mean, the report's almost done, we have, you know, he's presented this letter here, I'm just not sure what, what the, what you're trying to get to here, what do you?
So, according, you know, to the revised school code, we are under an obligation as a board to, we can't enter into a contract with just one board member, it has to be approval of the full board, and if that didn't happen here, my question basically is, if we sign this addendum today, how does that affect this contract? I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, that's why I'm asking if anybody else has an opinion, or if we should seek a second legal opinion, because there are certainly some things in the contract that, that I know some of us are not comfortable with, or we're a surprise, or the community's not comfortable with, and if it wasn't seen, you know, by the full board then.
Well, let me make a comment. So, Tom was the sitting president at the time, he would have been given the authority, he would have the authority as the president to engage and sign, which he did.
On behalf of?
On behalf of the board. He did text Ron, didn't I, did I not forward that to you guys? So, he did, he did text Ron that yes, Ron asked him before he signed that, am I right?
Yes.
You sent Tom an email, I believe?
Yes, again, I'd be hesitant to get into attorney-client privilege, other than to just say that there was, there was authority provided.
Right, so, and, and Tom would have had that authority, and, and we had given Tom that authority because we wanted to do the third-party investigation, do you see where this is going? So, you know, we as a district had decided to do the third-party investigation, we voted to do it, we read a resolution, we, I mean, this was, this was part of a very big process, there was a committee that looked for the, I mean, there was, this was a very big process. And so, when we decided to do that, we also decided to engage in an attorney-client relationship with Varnum, and that is, that is what, that is what this authorizes, what, what your parents brought to the, or your in-laws brought to the meeting two, a couple of weeks ago, this would have been a, an engagement letter between GuidePost and Varnum, is how I understand it, it's not really an engagement between the district.
That's what we're told, but again, our signature is on it, so that if we're a signatory on the contract, we are a party to the contract, are we not? Again, not a lawyer, trying to understand, and there was a motion and approval for the engagement between the BOE and Varnum, but there was not a motion or a vote for this engagement, that's just what I'm trying to understand.
I would just note that the engagement with Varnum specifically included the statement that Varnum would engage GuidePost Solutions as consultants to support our provision. So, it is in the engagement of Varnum that this would occur.
Agree to all of these terms without ever seeing them, though.
Because we, because we hired an attorney, and the attorney, Varnum, did it on behalf of the board, that's what.
Correct.
We don't necessarily vote on every step in every process that we do, we have areas that we give some greater authority to.
Right, but contracts, the law specifically says that it has to be approved by the board as a whole.
But that the contract wasn't, we were secondary on the contract. Now, if.
This was not our contract.
Correct.
This was between the two of them.
We just signed it.
Correct.
We, yes, we, Tom, on behalf of the board, gave authority to Varnum to sign it, to engage Varnum with GuidePost. The engagement letter between Varnum and the board was presented to the board by Tom, and again, was signed by him, but it was presented to us and shared with us, and we did vote on it, I don't know before the date.
Right, that's a separate one.
Right.
So, and, because in May, we voted.
Yeah, it would have been like May, the end of May, maybe the last meeting in May, or the first meeting in June, I don't recall, but, you know, that, that was what Tom would have needed the board to sign off on, or vote on, if you will. I do see where you're going, though, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify, I'm not necessarily shooting you down, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify kind of what I think happened. I did not see this contract, and I'm sure there's people that would, would say that I'm a liar, but I am not, I did not see it, you know, it was not shared with me before, but I'll be honest with you and tell you that, I know Danielle brought it up another time, I thought that she was referring to the engagement letter that we did get from, that was dated on the 24th, so that was, I will, I will own that, that is my mistake, I misunderstood what was being presented, she presented it before, and I think you brought it up as well, so, I just, I wasn't catching on that it was, I wasn't thinking of the same contract. But I'm all ears now, so that's how we're here. So, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if we should get another legal opinion or not it.
I'd just like to also, what I'm trying to get to is how, at this point in the game, how does this serve our students? How does it serve our students to incur more legal fees to look at things that have already happened when the report is coming out? We do, we have this other letter, I mean, that's where I'm coming from, I don't, I don't know how that energy and that money serves the students when we just want to get the report.
Well, because this contract basically releases GuidePost of any and all responsibility for, you know, pretty much anything, and so, if there ever were to be something later in the game, I think it would, I just think that it would be beneficial if we had another opinion, because if we do tonight approve this addendum, I don't know if Ron can speak to it, we don't have another lawyer here, how does that affect the validity of this contract? Do we know? Do you know?
Well, I'm not comfortable providing legal opinions in this session.
Well, I would, I would say that if we have a question on the validity, that's not the lawyer we want to ask, because there's, that Ron is obviously involved in the particular thing. I think you, the board would, if this is what you want to do, then you would direct me to pursue a second legal opinion from an outside firm that is not involved in the situation as it is, and, you know, that may be something you decide you want to do, and then if you do, that may be something that puts this on hold. You may want to ask other questions, there's other things in the report that, that may be of interest for people to pursue, and you may want to come back to this after more discussion, but it's certainly possible, and could probably, you know, be something that we could, we could pursue, but again, not, Ron would not be the proper lawyer, in my opinion, for us to do that with.
If we do that, Amanda, or maybe even Ron, does this pause current activities with the writing of the final report of GuidePost? If we hold off and not, not vote to approve the addendum that you presented to us, is that going to add additional length and push us closer to the October 30th at all, or does, like?
Is your work going to continue?
The work's going to continue regardless of what you do with that.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess that's what I was asking, so like, you know, just trying to make sure, like, if, you know, if we're going to go for another legal opinion, if it's not going to pause or stall other stuff that's in progress.
It just means we don't get a commitment today that the report will be done by October 30th. No. I guess, here's my question, why October 30th versus September 30th? I think, you know, when we, we sit here and, I'll be on the board a year in October, so, I think I've heard on a few occasions that it will be this date, and then it was six to eight weeks, and then another six to eight weeks, I guess, I know you kind of talked about the prosecutor finally giving you some new information just as recently as of today, and you guys are synthesized and synthesized, oh my gosh, I can't talk to that information. I feel like we've paid a lot of money, and that people could burn the midnight oil to get on a keyboard.
Well, I appreciate your frustration with that, but that's the date in looking at everything globally, and obviously, we're not giving a report to the board and everything that's being looked at, that's where GuidePost is comfortable that it can happen. I've tried to give some reasons, and when I first spoke about why that is, the information, the additional information from the prosecutor, we expect it to receive soon, but we haven't got it yet, the request, the indication was made that it would be received, as we said, we're grateful for that, and as we received fairly recently a large volume of documents from the district, there's the Miller hearing, but there's, there's just the, the work of the pulling the report together, and the follow-up that naturally has to occur as you put the report together with certain individuals to fact-check, to make sure it's right, and that's what I want to stress, it's just too important, and GuidePost is not willing to tell you September 30th because they want to make sure, and everyone involved in the investigative team wants to make sure it's right, it's, what's said is what's intended to be said based upon the facts and the evidence. So, I can't give you a much better answer than that, there's still work that's being done, and that's the date by which, putting all these factors together, they're comfortable, they can fit, give the final product, but if it's sooner, it will be sooner, at that, every effort will be made to do that, working diligently, conscientiously, but that's the date that is committed to, it has to happen.
I have another one too.
Okay.
So, there's two parts of this, there's the letter and of understanding, but then there are two actual items that would be part of the addendum, am I correct so far? But everything in the letter is not contractually obligated, so for example, the date of October 30th is not part of the addendum, is that correct or incorrect?
I'm not sure, I'm following exactly, the letters, the letter supplements, I think I would say.
Is that legally binding, is the letter part legally binding, or only the two items proposed to add into the addendum? Because the two items do not mention October 30th, it just says it in the letter.
On the front page, the one we got today.
Correct. Mm-hmm. So, I think, I mean, personally, I'd like to see quite a few more than, than two things added into the addendum, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but one of the major ones obviously being the October 30th deadline, because that's only in the letter that you sent explaining. because that's only in the letter that you sent explaining.
Well, the intention was that the whole letter would be part of the commitment from GuidePost and Varnum in agreement. And that the board would acknowledge that that's the commitment. So for instance, before you get to the two, before you get to the two numbered items, there's the, you know, whether it's contractual or not, there's a commitment. There'll be a single report, for instance, the statement that's made. There'll be a single report.
But that's also not in the actual addendum item. So that's where I'm just trying to, again, understand. Are, is GuidePost legally bound to October 30th? October 30th, if we do not put it in the addendum and also that there's only one report and any other things that we're looking to have, are they obligated if it's not in the actual items of the addendum?
Everything that is in this letter, I would say to you, GuidePost is committing to and is obligated in terms of their agreeing to this. Agreeing with Varnum and agreeing with the board that this is what's going to happen. The effect of a failure to do it, I'm not in a position to tell you what that would be. It's as much an agreement as you could make. I mean, we could change numbered paragraphs, move things into numbered paragraphs. But these are the things that GuidePost and Varnum are agreeing to deliver.
Well, we all say that's a work that they agreed to deliver and there are items in there that were not included in the first report. So that's why I'm asking if this is contractually bound. There were supposed to be cost estimates. There were things that were missing from the first because they were not required contractually to provide. They just gave us a piece of paper that said we're going to. So is that the same as the letter? Does anybody? Am I following?
All I can tell you is that we're agreeing to do that. But Varnum and GuidePost are agreeing to do that, to provide a single report, to provide on those days. So to the extent you're asking me whether that's a contractual agreement, yes, the letter is a contractual agreement, all parts of the letter. It is, would be the position we would take. We are agreeing to do that.
So you would be comfortable, item, you know, one, two, adding item three, that the report is on before October 30th? Item four, that there will only be one report? Because again, that scope of work that we were originally provided does say GuidePost can provide a detailed report to be leveraged by the district internally to enhance safety and security measures, as well as a report to share overall findings. So they're speaking of two separate reports, which we don't have here, but it's nowhere in the contract. So would they be comfortable adding those?
I'm sure they would, but I guess what I'm trying to tell you is it's unnecessary because it's in the latter. Whether it's in number one or two or otherwise in the latter, that would be an unnecessary, in my view, modification to the latter as it stands.
Okay. Let me also add, what number reference are you talking about from where it says?
The statement you just made.
Report. There's so many letters.
I know.
Five, give me several pages.
Okay, so this was in the proposal. And I print out the whole thing. I do have it on my computer. Where I gave you, you know, introduced Brad and about our firm and that whole, let me document, 28 pages where they also said total estimated expenses would be $613,000, which we entered well past. Where they, they gave the 28 page of.
You're talking about this?
Yes. So on that, under Task 7, Preparation and Submission of Report. The very first sentence is where it says that. And then if you're talking about the other one, I forget what page that's on, where they were supposed to include the cost estimate with the first initial security report that was not included.
So what you just said, the first security, initial security report. That, I think, in reference to when they wrote this, was the first report that already came out in May. That talked about our facilities, our facilities management, the, you know.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
The sidewalk, I mean, everything.
That's what I'm talking about. In Task 4, it says that they will include a rough order of magnitude budget estimates for the proposed modifications to the existing conditions. That was not included.
That was supposed to be part of the first report and I think we'd asked for it the last time Bradley was here.
That was discussed in closed session.
What did he say? Okay. Okay, so we did, so we're missing the cost estimates. Is that what we're saying from the first report?
I was just using those two things as an example to say that they've given us this document that outlines what will be included. But as we understand now, contractually, they don't have to do any of that. It's only what's in the contract that we agreed to. So that was where I was just trying to understand if this letter is a guarantee. Because I'm not a lawyer and I don't know if addendum versus letter holds up.
Yep, I agree. Okay.
So but what I'm hearing is that if the board would be more comfortable, you would take the end date and make it a number three on the second page. And you would take the statement about the final report being completed independently by GuidePost as number four in that addendum if the board so chose to put this on hold until that happened. And was there more than those two?
Well, I'll be totally honest, we received this at 2:30 today and I am not comfortable at all approving this tonight. I think that we need time to digest, ask more questions, figure this out, get a second opinion. And most importantly, we haven't even heard from our community and what they think. And to push this through in four hours, I'm not comfortable. That's just all I want to say.
Okay. Well, that's why we wanted to have this meeting, right? That's exactly why you have a board, a meeting and you discuss it and why we're doing it in public. And so the public knows that we are taking this seriously and we are trying to work everything out. Okay. So we're not going to, well, I guess, I, I'm sorry, I can go and do some more questions. I'm sorry, yes.
Amanda, are you saying that, so you?
There's a lot, I know.
Yeah, there's just so many different moving pieces. So in your opinion, we shouldn't approve tonight, but we should definitely have this other document looked at because none of us, at least you and I, have no idea what all of this is saying and what this is holding the district responsible for is the main concern.
A little, yeah, a little bit more than that, but essentially.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Sergeant.
No, that's fine. Anybody else?
Just give me a second here.
I know. So I've done this for hours over the weekend, just trying to understand all the documents. It's a lot, so. And I thought I had a handle on it before, so it's just.
Okay, I do have another question.
Okay.
Okay, so the document that we were given, this document, the, between GuidePost and Varnum, where did this come from? Does anybody know?
The letter dated August 29, 2023.
May 26, 2022.
Where did it come from initially or how did it get into public?
Both. Where did it come from initially and how did?
From my understanding, it was signed by Tom Donnelly.
Correct.
Without the knowledge of the rest of the board.
It wasn't really signed by Tom. It was signed by Ron. Tom gave him authority.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Authorization, details clear.
Perfect. And then it was FOIA'd back in August 2022 by a community member and has been out there since then and has been discussed. You were not on the board at the time.
Okay.
And we have received many emails about it.
Okay.
But as far as me personally, I've never received this from GuidePost or Varnum. Correct so far?
I think so, yes.
Okay, all right. I'm not trying to muddy the waters. I'm just trying to understand. Very complicated.
I do have a question about scope and what they were doing. So we got the first report. I guess if this is the document, the proposal one, is this what we are taking the scope from? Or was there?
There was a, there was a separate scope, I think.
Yeah, specifically.
I sent it to you guys.
Yeah, somehow, somehow I think I have it in front of me. But I sent it to everybody. I found it electronically and I saw.
Do you want my copy?
No, no.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, because in the contract, it talks about GuidePost and their scope. Right? But scope is a relative term that's a little subjective. And I think we just want to make sure, I want to make sure, I think I know what that is. And I want to make sure, what I've seen, so my understanding, just Amanda from the process of what I've read, and again, I'm not an attorney, but the board voted to engage Varnum on the principal matter that they would engage GuidePost and thus allowing authority, from my understanding, for them to engage in this contract. Why we're a third party to it, I think makes it very messy in the sense that we had to pay the bill when, and again, I'm going to fact check these numbers. But it's messy, is all I'm going to say, is that we're third party to it. But to pay the bill and if that's the understanding of the board at the time, I wasn't on the board at that time. So I can't comment on what was known or not known about that, nor do I think it's appropriate for us to debate that. I know you guys want to because you were here, but I want to make sure we understand the timeline. They voted engagement of Varnum. With the principal understanding that GuidePost would be an independent third-party investigation without influence from the board.
Correct.
They then engaged GuidePost in this contract that's for the purposes of client and in sevendity, which means pay, by the way, right, is that we would pay them. But it also just mentioned some other things like the professional rates. We discussed who's we. You and him, I'm assuming, but there was no attachment of that. And I think from a responsibility standpoint, that is something that we should know. If it's these rates in the proposal, is this the scope in the proposal that we engaged you to agree to? And again, some of this maybe we need to maybe go into closed session and then bring it back out to vote on it. I don't know. I, what I really want to make sure is we're really far away from the actual event that occurred. We are creeping up to the second year anniversary and October 30th feels like very late considering quite literally 30 days later is the anniversary and the second anniversary. So I want to make sure we understand. It's very interesting. So. The scope would be my request to, is understanding, all that noise I just made was to understand the scope of the second report. Because I understand, and maybe I'm confused and that's fine. I can be corrected after that. The first report was about the physical security and threat assessment, policies and procedures. And then there would be a second report as GuidePost has updated us in open session multiple times. That was the events leading up to the shooting, the day of the shooting and some of the post-shooting stuff. But I don't see where that's articulated here other than a draft email we got as a draft from Heather forwarded to us.
There were several discussions about scope. That initial proposal, the scope did grow after that. And the direction was to keep the documents purposefully not too constricting so that because it was an independent review into an event that had far-reaching consequences and involved the community in all sorts of different ways, that the independence would allow that scope to reflect where the investigation led. And there were things that came up, for instance, that were asked to be looked into. We have never given a report on the substance to the board. I don't think we should, we would do that now. But there are things that arose during the investigation that needed to be looked into. There were things that were, where the evidence led that needed to be looked into. So the scope was purposefully done without a lot of detail. Other, there was an early proposal, but that was not ultimately, I would say, what the scope followed. And of course, as you're aware, the investigation became a very different investigation that was anticipated because of the strong headwinds that the team faced in terms of, you know, significant challenges with cooperation for different reasons that have been in the public sphere that I don't believe we need to go into here today. But it became a different sort of investigation than was originally anticipated. And that process, those issues, those legal issues that arose, the board was briefed on those and decisions were made at certain points on those legal issues relating to cooperation and whatnot, but never on the substance.
And who drafted the scope? You and GuidePost?
The original scope, I believe, that looked at when there was early discussions with GuidePost, I believe was Guide, it was GuidePost.
Anyone else? I'd just like to comment that I do think it's important to have things in a row. And I don't want to do anything that's going to slow this down. I just, I don't want to do anything that's going to get in the way. I think that we could have done this whole process a whole lot different. And when this all started, things were a lot different. I want to be sure that whatever time that we're putting in to things that have already happened in contracts and writing, that we're not putting in more energy than it needs. I just want to be really careful about where we're spending our energy. I think it's important to know about finances when Conley brought that up. So that, that is something that directly affects our students. So that's important. So I can relate that, that something is important. But again, I just want to be, I don't want to slow down the release of this report. And I don't want to, I want to use our energy in the right way.
I agree with that, but I think that clearing this up and straightening this up and them continuing to write and edit the report are two different things. So the people, I think, that are writing and editing and doing things like that at GuidePost and/or Varnum are, would not be the people that we're going to involve on just kind of cleaning this up a little bit. This, this needs some cleanup. It does.
Heather, my case.
Oh, I was just going to say kind of similarly. I mean.
I think it's, you know, two separate people.
According, I mean, as Ron said, really, this doesn't, this is just assurance, right? This, this doesn't, as far as he's concerned, this doesn't change what report's going to come out.
Or the date.
The date, I mean, that might, right? I mean, obviously, we want to get that down in writing. But as far as the process starting as, you know, from now till the report comes out, I mean, Ron said, this, they're, they're moving forward. None of this that we're discussing, if we get a second opinion, which I think we should, affects their process. And so this is kind of just assurance on our side. I definitely think since this does, I mean, it's obviously addendums to the, this, I think we do need to understand exactly what we're, what was signed up for here, what was obligated as far as to GuidePost or Varnum or however. But because, I mean, now we're, I mean, you know, this is mostly a new board, really. And, and we want to make sure that we know what we're agreeing to again. I mean, that's, I think that's just common sense, honestly.
I agree, but you know.
No.
Back to Mary's point, too, we're in the ninth inning here. We're trying to.
Oh, I understand.
We're trying to get this report out and really, in the end, what was signed a year and a half ago, May of 2022, you know, is, you know, what conclusion does that have necessarily on the report? I don't know. I mean, there's people that think that it would, it would dilute the conclusion. So let's clean that up and let's figure it out and let's move forward so that this process can stay on track.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm, as long as we're adding value, you know, and if that's what, if that's how, and I understand, I do understand the points. I just want, I want to continue to ask the question and make sure. and make sure that what we're doing is adding, is adding value. So thanks for, I appreciate the discussion.
I was just going to add. So it sounds like the majority of us would like to just put a pause on this and get another opinion.
I think so.
Should we vote?
Who would have to vote?
So we made a motion, so we actually have to vote because the motion's already rolled and made.
And you voted table, either one.
Oh, yeah.
It goes in the choices.
Oh, you can take.
Yeah, and Erin said something different. You said to consider. It was different than what I have on my agenda.
Do you know why I didn't flip it over? Want me to reread it?
No, no. Oh, reread it on how you read it originally.
So tabling it, how, how do we record the table?
Well, Heather, just a second. Colleen's right. Erin didn't read it. It's just a little bit different than what I grabbed.
But I think if we're tabling it, doesn't matter. I don't think.
I, I don't know. I've never.
I guess we wore my tablet. Can we talk about what the expectation for bringing it back? Because obviously, we pulled together.
Sure, we're still in district.
A special meeting, hoping to resolve this. I think we've made a couple propositions to just amend the agreement to include the things that Amanda suggested, and I don't need to repeat them. That's, I, I don't feel like that's a giant ask. I just wonder what the timeline for turning it around is. Because really, I don't want to keep laboring this. It's been, it's a lot, right, to continue to talk about the same thing. And we do, we're back in school session. We want to focus on our students in these meetings. And this is something that I think is a high priority to get done so we can realign our focus during our meetings to some of the things that have to get done from a business standpoint for the district without all the extra noise. Because there is things that we agree as the new board that we would like our representation to include in their agreement with, or very close.
Well, all you're doing is moving things from the body of the letter into the number of paragraphs. And obviously, that won't take very long at all. If there's additional provisions or things that you're looking for, I guess that, that would be subject to discussion. I don't know what those would be.
So do we want to, I know Amanda said she brought, you know, the digestion. Time hasn't been long enough. So maybe do we go back and digest it and, and give some thought? And send your emails to me, and then I will send them to Ron type thing? Do we want to do that?
So we have some things for Barnum. And we also are talking about getting a second, about getting a legal opinion on the contract because we don't have one. Is that correct?
There's one of our current engaged attorneys. So do we have a current?
Like a Blaha?
We could do that. We, we've also.
The Blaha.
Yeah, Blaha or Trun, either one.
It's true. Yep. I mean, okay. And we want a legal, let's be clear so we know what to ask them from Amanda. About legal opinion, I know, James, you commented to just, I want to be very clear. So we're going to ask them as, to read this and kind of give their opinion on that in conjunction to this.
Correct. And the fact that, is it a contract that, that we entered without a full approval? Or is it not a contract? It's just our, you know, GuidePost, Barnum, like, has been told to us. I would like to legally understand that relationship better because our signature is on that contract.
Well, it is not. Ron says.
Well, on behalf of Tom. Okay, yeah. So on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
Yes. So I would like to see that.
Just so I can be clear, I don't, Tom wouldn't have signed this. Let me just kind of like go back and clarify that. This would be a, this was, this was and is a contract, correct me if I'm wrong, between GuidePost and Barnum.
It is ordinarily, but what we saw was the acknowledgement that Barnum wasn't responsible for the fees. And then there's some other financial provision in there. That, that the board would be. And I presume the board's not backing up on that issue now. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's.
What this is, is a contract between the two of you's relationship.
Yes.
But Oxford was added, and that really messed me.
So I think perhaps the question for the second opinion is, if this is a contract between Barnum and GuidePost, to what extent does the mention of Oxford Schools and the authorized signature from Oxford Schools impact that contract for them or for us? Is that?
Correct.
And then also, what changes or does not change if we add the letter addendum?
Are you worried about risks to the district?
There's a few things in here that I just want to be more clear on and what we're responsible for. And, you know, we weren't here. And as you can, as you said, it gets a little messy. And there are things that I just want to know about. You know, the arbitration is done through New York, not Michigan. I want to fully understand what the district is liable and not liable for within this contract. Because it says that on the last page, you know, all the terms have been agreed to and accepted. And if that's the case, I think that would help us also choosing the items for the addendum based on the contract. If contract as it is, is what it is, I think that will determine what we would like added in the addendum.
It would be helpful for me, though, Amanda, if you had other things versus the ones that we listed tonight that you want to ask the lawyer about. I need to know. But you'll need to just let me know what those are.
I'll highlight it.
And I feel like we're spinning to talk about the district versus, I think we're just reframing it in a way that's not the intention in that we're spinning it to look at risk for the district when really what we want is to make sure the report comes out. Sorry. I just want to be careful in understanding. And the reason I ask that question is because I feel like we're spinning and asking questions about risks to the district when I know that's not the intention of this meeting. The intention was to look at the contract to see if there was opportunities in which that we could clarify and ensure that the report and its integrity was held and it was done on a timely basis. But I feel like what I'm hearing continuously is, as we go and look at other things, and I just want to make sure. Because we did engage Barnum. He is our attorney. And has provided us advice on engagement with GuidePost. So I just want to make sure we're not spinning away from, we're looking at this as a district issue versus this is, we want to make sure the report has the highest integrity. Right? And I don't know about a second opinion. I feel like I'm having a moment of deja vu around this right now. So excuse my fluttered thoughts. But will necessarily satisfy that? Because what you're getting a second opinion for is, what is the risk to the district? Just, just to clarify, that is what you're asking, Amanda.
Well, I guess part of that, that legal opinion would be understanding exactly what, what this contract, what GuidePost is obligated to deliver given what we're talking about here. And as, as.
Including a couple points to it is one thing, right? There to deliver a report by, I guess, we're really going to be forced into, and I would love to say September 30th, and then then come back on September 29th and tell us all why September 30th is unachievable. Because we're not supposed to influence, right? So how am I supposed to say certain things if I'm not supposed to also influence at the same time? I'm, I'm just spinning it different ways for you guys?
No, I, I agree with you. Because I, I think some of, as I'm listening and processing.
We're getting stuck in weeds, right?
Yeah. And, and trying to be unfettered and with the scope being loose and stuff, we're, we're just, you know, it's, we're not doing the investigation. And I, I'm with you on that. Fair. I'm trying to put it, it's a lot.
I just don't want to lose sight of why we're doing it.
Right.
Right. I agree. The validity of the report, the delivery of the report is obviously important. But although I, I'm hearing what Ron said, the integrity and the quality of the report is really important, too. I don't want people to say, well, they missed this, or they missed that, or this was incorrect or not fact-checked, fact-checked. The families deserve the report. And it should be the best quality that Barnum and GuidePost can give them. So whatever we can put in place to help that, I'm, you know, I'm for it.
So I guess the consideration on the table, and this is what I just, you know, before we make any decisions, I want you to think about that statement I just made, right? If we're looking, Barnum and GuidePost have come together to agree that Barnum will not manipulate the report in any way. They will not provide us the report prior to it being released from the public despite what the proposal says, which is not a legally binding document, by the way. It's just the proposal. What we do probably need added, Ron, is maybe just moving those things around so people, it's clear and it aligns with the numbers in the contract and where you're inserting these addendums to. One, two, three is not how your contract's laid out. It's like 1.1, 1.2. And I, I think that's a simpler, faster turnaround time. Now, in terms of getting a second opinion, we can certainly still do that. But I don't know if that will give you what you want for what this conversation really is. And I know you, Amanda, I know what you want is a, a report that has high integrity.
Absolutely.
So I guess those are my parting thoughts. I, I don't know how we take this forward without just highlighting a couple of those things and being more specific, potentially talking about, you know, if you can add that report one was what it was. We already know what it was. It was released, right? And maybe report two. And the scope is a little fluid because as you guys chased down leads, that's fine. But there were things that you started with and generalizations. Like, I'm assuming part of it was looking at the day of and the things that occurred that day. Right? So. I just hear the vent and so.
Okay. So here we are. So we either have to continue with the motion and vote or table it.
So what we can do is because of the way that, that Erin did not read the wording that was on the paper, we can, she can move to amend her motion and then get a second and read the motion as is written. Then get a second for that. And then we can, and then we would vote, that we would, we could debate, we can vote on the amended, with the second, it changes the, I'm sorry. Let me slow down. With the, with the amendment and the second, that changes that original motion. So then a vote would be on that motion. So that would be a vote to accept it or not. But you can amend the motion with you saying the amended motion and with a second.
Can't.
Does that make sense?
Can't Erin amend her motion to table this motion?
Well, but, but the motion that's on the table is not really the correct one. So I was trying to get the correct motion on the table first.
Okay.
And then we can, it's a postponement. And then we, then anybody during the discussion can move to postpone it. And then we can have a second and vote on postponing the motion. But it would be better practice to have the correct motion on the table first.
Okay. And then going back to, I guess, if we are going to table it, I'm just going to say it out loud. Ron said it wouldn't take more than a few days turnaround. I don't want to continue to drag out this conversation through every single board meeting through September. I don't want to wait two weeks. And I know it's a lot on us. It's time away from our families as well. But I think we owe that to get this cleaned up so that way it can be done. And then, again, I would, I would position, Ron, that you ask Andy about the date. Be hard-pressed to find me getting any closer to November without being overly emotional and probably unprofessional. So I apologize.
Okay. Any more comments before we undo the motion? Good?
So I just want to be clear. We will think about the addendum and email Heather. What we would like to see in there? Is that the process forward right now?
Yes.
Okay. And then also for our community members.
And I'll put together like a summary.
That have, you know, list of things that they'd like to see. Vicki and Heather, to give them ample time as well to digest and think. And then are you, were you proposing that we do a special meeting prior to the next? Is that, okay?
If it's back in time, I would, again, our meetings are really already long, you know, so I want to make sure that we give this the attention that it needs and not screw it.
Let me just ask, because I don't want to go against like the OMA or whatever. But so say Colleen emails me some things and Amanda, you know, I want you guys to see what other people have to say, though. I think there's a lot of validity in, in that. Can I not share that?
I'm not sure what's, what we haven't discussed today that would be additional, I guess. In my opinion professionally, I mean, ready.
You don't want to poll the board. And you don't want to have any kind of consensus.
Yeah, I'm not saying polling, but just other people.
Being on the board is, is a leadership position, and you have to digest information quickly.
Okay.
So Erin, are you saying that?
I'm saying I think we've made our recommendations. I don't know what else there is to make. I guess, I'm, I'm willing to stay here for a few more minutes while you digest it. Like, wait, I got time. I've already made. I, I don't mean to be a smart. I'm not trying. I'm really sorry. And please don't laugh. I'm just, this is what this meeting was for. I don't want to continue to take more time. I've already taken this night away from my family to be here because this is important to me personally, as well as everyone in this room. So if we need time to kind of sit and digest, take a five-minute break, go cry in the bathroom, because I might be being rude right now. I'm sorry. Like, I might go cry in the bathroom real quick. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're taking the time we, we gave this night to this. Let's just not, we need to marinate. They can, they can sit and stare at us. It's fine. So.
So you said, Amanda, you had everything highlighted in yellow. Maybe you could read us the list?
Yes.
Because it's probably the list you'd be emailing, right?
So we're talking about here for things now.
Well, we're talking, yeah. The one, the one I'm concerned about is not the legal opinion because that's a separate thing. What I'm concerned about now is what you are suggesting might have to go in that.
I'm not suggesting anything towards to go. I'm, I highlighted where anywhere is said client agrees to so that we understand.
Can you go through, oh, can you, can you also say before you say it, like 2.1 or whatever, so that we follow along?
Sure, sure, I can.
Well, I just want to be sure my question is the right question in the table. I was wondering, I thought you had more things to list here.
Yeah, like I said, we're talking about two different, two different things here.
So Amanda, before you get to the other thing, is the one, two, three, the date? Does, does, if we move the date, one, two, three?
Right.
Is that what you think should be?
I would like to see the date in there. Anything else? Like Erin said, I would like to see the scope in there and not just a couple different things that we have, what the deliverables we can expect are. And then, there was another one that I had written down.
What do you mean by deliverables that would be different than scope?
So as far as one.
Report.
Report.
So moving that language from the first paragraph into.
That would be another.
A very numerical outline, essentially, especially what would be inserted. It would be nice if it was aligned with the actual contract numbers as well.
Does deliverable of one report? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. And did you have another one?
Not off the top of my head right now, and I'm sorry that it takes me a little bit longer.
No, you're fine.
We did, we just hit it to 30. And so there's probably things that, you know, we're not thinking about right away. And I just want to make sure that we're doing this properly and thoroughly because I think that's been a problem in the past of some rushed decisions perhaps, and so.
The beauty of contracts is you can continue to amend them.
Okay, so does that change anything? If we add one addendum tonight, does that change any part of this contract, you know, like we had mentioned before?
Ron did say an addendum is a legal agreement. It's an extension of the contract. It's an addendum to the contract.
I believe it. We asked for this. We asked for clarification, right? In this letter, isn't that to be clarification to that contract? That is my understanding. So Ron's not trying, Guidepost, nobody's trying to do anything different except that we asked for clarification on the contract, and so that's what this is designed to be, clarification.
Especially around the topic of the destruction or the, you know, the different type of reports that, where the language is in there where it was a little confusing or could be interpreted as one report to the board pre-hand and then one to the public and stuff, and stuff. So that's, Mary, with you saying that, that's, yeah, I thought that's where this conversation, or where this letter came from is, I don't want to call it necessarily reassurance, but of like questions that we've gotten from, as we've looked more into it, and people have pointed out, and that means asking questions, and that's what's brought us here tonight. So.
So if we operate, we can have this other contract reviewed, but it's already, you know, people, legal people have already reviewed it. I understand the want for somebody from our legal team, but it's, lawyers have already looked at it. So if we operate on the assumption that this is a normal contract, this one that we were handed, that's with Varnum and Guidepost, and there's no issue with any, it's a binding contract, I think at this point we need to operate on that basis. And back to what Vicki was saying, so then what do we?
It is a binding contract, what we're asking.
Do we know that for sure?
She was asking.
Because it was not.
She was asking. Sorry.
So that's, is it?
Well, that would, we could get a second opinion, but if you really wanted to challenge it, it would go to court. Yeah.
That was Amanda's first question.
That's not the intent, but I want to know.
Which, by the way, in that contract, we're responsible for all those costs as well. Just saying.
I saw that.
So if we operate on the assumption, because at this point it is a binding contract, what do we need moving forward? And I think that's what you're saying, right, Vicki, is that, is trying to recap, summarize what it is we have talked about so we don't have to carry it on. So we're talking about the date, the due date, and one report, right? So that's, those are the things.
And the due date and the deliverable. I got it. The scope, I'm not sure.
And material destruction.
So there's four things we want a little bit more specific.
Right.
Is that.
One.
I'm going to go overall for.
Okay, overall for.
Same page. The end date, in which if there was a reason in which Guidepost could not perform to that end date, they would have to propose a new end date for us, in front of us and our community. And I think we all agree that the nebulous end date is no longer meaning to be nebulous. There was the two.
The scope and deliverables.
The scope, the deliverable of one report, which is already in there. I think just whatever high-level scope that you guys agreed upon just needs to be in there so we understand what we're potentially and already have received. And then the material destruction thing that's, you already included in that first, and what that looks like. So I think the ones that were in there were appropriate. I just think they need to be added in different order so that it's easier to digest and understand. And again, where they're committing together on paper signing that they will do these things. If they fail to do these things, at our expense, according to the contract, we pursue, I'm assuming, litigation, if that would be in our best interest for our students.
Arbitration in the work, I believe, is what we signed, too. But I did just think of one more thing that I, depending on, to add, and again, sorry, I'm not fully prepared because it hasn't been that long, but a town hall that is in the scope and the proposal, but also not in the contract, so.
I think it says in the memorandum if we choose to do that.
So that they would offer that regardless of date because from my.
It said on there continuation after the report, so that isn't there.
So.
If we request additional services.
But you're saying you want to be number five on the other side of the page?
That they commit to doing so.
Rather than on the front page.
Do we want to say that? Do we want to say request additional services?
Could be additional services. I don't know if we need to, like, scope it in so tight that it's just one thing, because it could be something.
But it's in the letter.
It says such as.
Right.
Such as.
Second paragraph.
Services such as.
Right.
Public meetings.
So what I'm hearing is you want the things that are in the letter moved in a more formal way. The purpose of the letter was to just provide clarification, as was indicated, you know, a simple way. We can move into a more formal numbered paragraphs if that's what you would like. Terms of the scope, again, I think it would be a high-level scope. That's, because we don't want to get too much into the substance. I don't think you want us to, right? Pre-report.
Correct.
Right. We have headers, right?
Yes.
Day of, November 29th, November 30th.
Yeah, the general scope.
Something to measure against.
So I have end date, high-low scope, the independence issue, the provision that talks about additional services. And we can go through the letter and pick everything out that's in there and move it into numbers.
I think that's what we're asking.
Okay.
As they align with your numbers.
Yeah. They might supplement them, so they might not perfectly align.
Like 1.1A?
Yeah, we can figure it out.
So parliamentarian, I will amend my vote, okay? However, does that mean?
Amend my motion.
I guess first before I do that, I just, I'm clarifying this process so that we're following the parliamentarian rules that we need to from Robert's rules. Is what we just discussed okay with everybody if we have any further discussion before I do that, because I don't want to have to amend and then start a discussion?
I'm ready.
Okay, so we're not emailing me like that, that.
Right, that's not occurring.
That's now since passed. Yep, that's not going to occur.
Just did.
Yep, we just did it.
So we have it in a couple of days. We need to bring it back, or are we approving it with edits? Or are we, these are my questions. What are my options?
We really need to bring it back, I think. So how it should do is, like Mary said, we have to undo it and then redo the motion, and then we're going to have to, he's going to have to make the changes, and then we need to come back and approve it in public.
Correct.
That's what should happen. So whether that meeting happens maybe next Tuesday, we don't have a board meeting next Tuesday, is that correct?
No.
So we could maybe do it next Tuesday or whatever, you know, availability. Check with Ron. That's probably what we should do.
Okay.
So, you know, it is delivery day weekend. I know we have one board member traveling for eight days.
That's right.
Amanda won't be here for eight days, right?
Lucky, Amanda.
Well, we have to, you know, assume, you know, we're going under a lot of, you know, her comments.
What I would say is we will throw out a date and.
When are you leaving?
Saturday, November 2nd through the 10th.
Next, probably next 12th.
Yeah, I mean, that's the next.
I mean, is there any chance we could, like, get this done and take care of it Thursday before you leave? Is that like, you know?
Is.
Acceptable?
I'm going to be in Chicago Thursday, I don't really matter, but I would be.
You don't need to be here for that, do you?
Well, it depends how much you want to talk about it.
Would you be, you know that other guy that used to, that came with you before?
Other guy?
Mr. Mount, Gary Mount.
Yes, Gary. Would Gary be able to come?
Probably, he probably would be excited about it, though. I could talk to him. I would think in communications with you and Dr. Markovich, we could get it in a position where it answers the questions. If it's limited to these things, that's not going to be difficult. If it's going to get into other issues, you're seeking legal opinions on the contract between Varnum, you know, and Guidepost that was, you know, that's been subject of discussion, and it's legal issues that relate to board risk and things like that, I mean, then I would, I'd think that'd be difficult to do in an open meeting, and I think I would want to be here if that's where it's going to go.
Well, that's why I was trying around to make sure that we had two buckets here. One is, is if the board wants to move ahead with this addendum, with this agreement, given the five things we've now added to the second page and however we reorganize it, that's this. Now we have the issue of the old contract, how it was done, who it was done by, what it means, and all of that. That's over here with a second opinion. But again, I don't think anybody wants this issue to stall the report. Am I right on that?
Mr. Mount's actually going to be with me in Chicago, I just remembered.
Yeah.
Where it's the same.
So I think we're just talking about this issue right here. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. But I'm just, I mean, we spelled out what our expectations are for the additional points here. We, I mean, albeit not that long ago, but we had this shared with us, right, over email?
Right.
And so I think we've discussed this to a point where we, if, and I don't see why they wouldn't be able to be added as formal addendums under, like, formal line items. If we get this, I think it's kind of a, almost a formality to accept it next, next meeting.
I could be available remotely, too, if it's at similar time, probably be returning.
Next meeting, but so for like, I know it's two weeks from now, but it's just.
Three weeks, right?
No, it's two weeks.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, I don't, I don't, and so it's two weeks from now, and if we've seen it, then it should be something that we can just.
Do.
Vote to accept. I know, I know we don't want to drag it out, and I'm glad that we got to this point where it should just be a formality, right? But, I mean, it can be a line item on the 12th, which is only two weeks from now.
It may turn into this big, long hour and a half discussion, though I just feel like it should be cleaned up and done before, but.
I think that's where I'm at, too, because if it comes back, we can't discuss it amongst email, right? And so if we have, take issue with it, we need to come back and do it again. And then, next thing you know, it's the 12th, and then it's the 30th, and then, again, I keep circling back to the same point as, if we're going to take our time away from our own families to make this a priority, let's make it a priority and so that our board meeting is school, children, teacher, business. This is obviously school, teacher, business, but it deserves its own time.
Would the board consider starting that next meeting at 5:30?
We'd do it 8 o'clock in the morning if we could. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Much, much quicker than.
Okay. It would just give us an extra hour if we needed, and if not, then work on an hour earlier. Just a thought.
Until we come back, we can't pull a special meeting anyways, so.
True.
We need 18 hours notice and all that.
And to Michael's point, the goal is that we don't have to have more discussion, and that's why we would postpone the vote because this, you know, unless there's something earth-shattering, I think that we've been through, you know, much of this, and we're all, even though we didn't see this piece until today, people already had thoughts about, you know, what they wanted to see. So I think that you're absolutely right, Mike, that we, I don't mind giving more time in case there is, but keep in mind, we are allotting the time now to have this discussion. Thank you.
All right, are we ready formally?
Yes.
So amend, right? What's my word?
I move to amend my motion to state.
Say that again.
I move to amend my motion to state.
I move to amend my motion to state, move to accept and sign the letter of understanding as presented by Varnum LLP and Guidepost Solutions LLC.
He is second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I'm sorry, who's seconded it?
I seconded it.
Thank you.
Erin reread it. I seconded it. I'm asking for discussion.
I'd like to, I would like to move to postpone this matter until our meeting on September 12, 2023.
I would support that.
Until we meet on September 12?
That's our next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Colleen supported that.
Yeah.
Discussion on that item? Vote, please. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, unscheduled public comment. I know this cards came in. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Corey Vanderkay? Sorry, did you not want to go first?
I can go first. All right. So this is about the threat on the 14th, and my daughter was one of the people who received the call. And tonight, after picking my daughter up from a practice, I came home, and my mother-in-law informed me that the news was talking about this already. I was like, okay, well, you know, I just found something out tonight, like around 3 o'clock. Okay, you know, she thought, well, you probably know more than I do. Well, I don't know with how everything's been going, but it turns out that I didn't know more than the news. So my daughter read the article that my mother-in-law sent her, and it goes into much more detail than what I was told by the deputy. So that's, that's really frustrating and irritating. Reading the article, I saw some clues in there, and I actually feel like I know who is behind it. Not the actual caller, but I do know, I'm pretty sure, the acquaintance that was mentioned. And I gave that name to the police, but not because they asked me, not because the school was interested in finding out anything. You guys didn't ask me if I was okay. You didn't ask if my daughter was okay. You didn't ask how you could help. And I got, like, I feel like I was told, what's the word, passive aggressively in an email, you know, that I shouldn't be on social media. It was through social media that I found the other parent who was called, and it was through talking with her that we figured out the connection. It was through that that I could give a name. Now, I didn't think it was really going to be that person, and I felt guilty. I felt guilty for even thinking it was this other person. But I gave them that name. Well, today, well, last night I got a letter from Maryland, totally unexpected. I had no idea that, that I would be receiving anything, and the letter was from the juvenile department there of services, and it's kind of vague, and I didn't even know if to take it for, you know, is this real? But anyway, I called this morning, the number on it, it doesn't work, but let me just finish this.
Please.
That I just went ahead and called the Maryland Juvenile Services myself. And anyway, I was told that there was an arrest. But, well, there's some information missing, and I'll talk to them about that, but I just want to say that nobody told me that it was connected to the person that I thought it was, and that person, I'm now scared. I am scared for my daughter because she knew that person. And I don't know, I just, I feel like there was just no support from the school, honestly. I was, you know, the first thing that was sent out to everybody was that it was a prank. I was, you know, the first thing that was sent out to everybody was that it was a prank.
Yeah.
It was a prank. It was not a prank. It was not a prank. And if it was your child that received this call, you would not take it as a prank. Okay? It was not a prank. That hurts so much because nobody took it seriously. Nobody took it seriously. And so I sent my kid to school, thinking the next day that there was going to be police here for that link day. I didn't see any police here. I was told there was going to be so many police here, no police here, so we drop off my daughter. Okay, you know, I'm going to trust that everything's being worked on. Well, then I take her to school, I'm just scared. I'm constantly scared, feeling like, is somebody following my daughter? Is somebody going to get her? I'm telling her, don't be by yourself, don't go to the bathroom by yourself at school. I had no support. And here I am, just swimming alone out here, trying to take care of my child, and then I'm receiving these communications that, I don't know, minimized it. And it just, I'm a new high school parent, but I remember the communications, um, in November particularly, and, uh, of 2021. I remember thinking, why isn't the school, um, having a zero tolerance at this point? They thought it was a prank. You can't tell us that it's a prank. I don't, that's it, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm like, I'm still trying to process, um, who, who this is that did this. From what I understand, they're not even being held accountable, only the caller. And the caller was being told, um, what to do. So I think the caller should be in trouble, but, um, I'm still worried about that other person. Okay? And I found out from the news. So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Cory. I'm sorry that that's just gotten worse, the whole Maryland thing. Just sorry to hear that. Next up is Mr. Blake.
Hi, I'll try to be brief here. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for deciding to make this an open meeting tonight. I think that's a step in the right direction, and I think the more of this that you do, the more trust we can build between the community. So I think that was a good decision, and I just wanted to say so. The other question I had, and, and I'm not quite sure how all this works, but there was a contract, it still is as far as I know, that we didn't care for, and you guys all know what I'm talking about. Is that contract still going to be in effect, or does this addendum nullify all of that? I would like to, I would like to get a contract, a copy of the addendum that you guys are looking at signing. Would you make that public? Could you make that available to the public so that we could give our input to what we think about it? The, the other question I have, and I'm not really clear, again, how, how this works, is the way I understand it, it was Varnum that contracted Guidepost to do the investigation on behalf of the school system. They were committing the school system to a very significant expenditure. Do they have an unlimited line as to how much they can commit this school system to without board approval? Because if that's the case, I think we need to look at that. I don't think that we should be giving anybody approval for that kind of money that they could be talking on. I understand this thing is probably going to be over a million dollars now. And I don't think that, uh, even, even a law firm should be able to make that kind of commitment to the school system. That should be you guys making that decision. So I think we need to look at that. If that's the case, I don't know if it is or not, maybe there's more to it, okay? I'm just asking, because if, if it is, I think we really need to look at that. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tom Donnelly?
First, I want to say that, um, Dr. Markwitz, um, history does matter. This week, we had a phone call. I just listened to an hour's conversation that I know 95% of the answers to what you're talking about, and I've offered to people on this board to talk to you. Open up my emails. Give me access to my emails. I know why the contract the way it is, and so do two other board members who have forgotten. If you could throw me on, under the bus and remember that I am a man of integrity, not like Heather you have said about me and Cory. I fought like hell to make sure that was done right. And there are reasons, and there was a budget number. And I'm probably the only president that dug into those bills, shoved some of them up their behinds and told them, I'm not paying for it, hired Pat Bono to help me because I couldn't keep track of it. So tell me, since last August, has any other president ripped through the budget, ripped through their bills, solved duplicates and triplets, said, I'm not paying for that $4,000 meeting? Probably not. Start treating with, with respect. Remember who I was. I am still the same person. The question is not, why did I resign? The question is, why didn't you all? Integrity is the issue. I watched you guys. How can you get any trust when it's a clown show? You don't even know how to run a meeting. Don't know how to have a discussion. Don't know how to make a motion, don't know how to... Have a parent that just had an issue and she learns more in the news? Have we learned nothing? I'm right here, I'm a pastor at firmly rooted ministries. I'm right at the Legacy Center. You know my number, call me up. How dare you spend time and waste all these people's time when I could give you all the information you need?
Jill Johnstone?
Hello. I'm Jill Johnstone, and I have three students in Oxford Schools. My family moved to Oxford about 10 years ago, and we chose Oxford as the community to raise our family because of the school district's reputation. So we moved here because we thought the schools were great, and we wanted our kids to live here and go to school here and learn here. We've been really happy with the education that our children have received. The educators and support our family has received has been, has far exceeded our expectations, better than we had ever thought it could be. The passion of our teachers and our staff has been evident in every interaction that we've had with the school. I truly feel like a team member in each of my children's educational journey. I believe a large part of this is because our district and our community trust our teachers to do what they've studied for and have been trained to do. I appreciate our board's support for that. I appreciate each board member for taking time out of their busy lives to keep our district running and supporting education. Somewhere along the way, our board and community members have seemed to become adversaries. We should all be on the same team. We all want what's best for our children, our schools, and our community. When upset family members have spoken, I've seen eye rolls and heavy sighs, indicating disinterest and annoyance by board members. We voted for you, and we need you to hear our concerns. We're the voices for our children. We're advocating for their needs when we come up here to speak. It's our job as parents. To our community members, more and more is being asked of our schools. Our children are experiencing things we could never have imagined. We need to work together to make sure our schools are safe and healthy. We count on our school board to keep an open line of communication and to follow through on what you say you will do. There's an amount of distrust within our community. We need to work together, and we need you to meet us where we are. Living in a small town can be a blessing and a curse. It can be really great that word travels fast. It can also be a little scary that word travels so fast because sometimes you don't have the, the time to get all the information correct. I think it's really disheartening that we have family members that found out on the news details that should have been shared with them first, before anybody else. They should have known. And it's heartbreaking that those students showed up on Link Day and felt unsupported by our school. They should have had every resource available to them to make them feel safe, because they have to feel safe if they're going to come to school and learn. I would like to just add one more thing. If we could get any sort of idea on where we stand with the Guidepost recommendations that were made in May, the recommendations that Guidepost made in our district, and what things have been fixed or remedied.
Danielle Kozak?
Good evening. So, two topics. The first being the Guidepost-Varnum relationship. So I'm the parent that FOIA'd the contract in August, or raised it for the first time to the existing board, August 9th, I believe it was. Talked to Tom about it, talked to the board about it, talked to Dan about it, made recommendations to modify or amend the contract at that time. So let me be clear. If you go to the Guidepost website, they have a very clear explanation of scope of services that they're providing to Oxford School District. They have a very clear statement about keeping the integrity of the report and ensuring it is not released to anyone, or that it's released to the same time to the public and the board. There's a lot you can learn from that website. And so many of you have received multiple emails from me. I've spoken about the Guidepost-Varnum contract and relationship, and concerns as a community member, as a, as a student, as staff, as the victims' families. We want to ensure integrity of the report. We're not here to waste time. We want a report with integrity. But we want to ensure, just like you all do, you get legal counsel and you ensure you're protected. The board represents this community. This should have been the most important, the most important contract to be read by all of you and the former board. So there's no excuse for it, and we're owed an apology. So I appreciate that it was finally brought front and center. Let's get it done. Let's amend it so that we've got some integrity and you have trust in what will be released. Go look at the website, that will help. Secondly, the last, the last board meeting, I raised my concern as well on the threats that were made on 8th, on the 14th. An arrest was made five days ago. I have very little trust that there is not at least one board member sitting up here today that did not know that a child or that a teenager was arrested five days ago on the 24th. This person made threats to kill, to rape, to sexually assault, and to shoot up the school. A threat made to the school is a threat made to my child, every child in that building, every staff member made in that, in that building, every teacher in that building, anyone in that building. This was not a prank. The emails that came out were insulting, even the one that came out today. This is, we need to learn from this. We absolutely need to learn from this. Five days ago, an arrest was made. This is, this is not how threat assessment, this is not how communication, this, this is not how you rebuild trust with the community, that these are being taken seriously. Cory's not alone. The, the, many parents and community members are incredibly concerned, which is why I escalated it today to the board, to Vicki, to Oakland County Sheriff, and Officer Barnes, or Deputy Barnes. That's why I escalated it, and I find it interesting that today it all comes out. We can't communicate like this. We can't hide. We can't hide it either. It comes across as it was being hidden and minimized. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Danielle. Um, Andrea Jones?
Been like an hour-long version of Who's On First, and here tonight it's, wow. So, we are now two school years in, and we still don't have an understanding of the contract that we signed for the report. And, and again, we, you had, you had this information. You could have gotten it from Tom, like you said, it was given to you by Danielle. It was also brought by another parent to a board meeting. There's been multiple emails, and we know that certain members of this board got them because they were opened and responded to. So, you know, saying that you didn't see it. So let's take that out and say you didn't see it. You've had parents here for a year and a half screaming about the integrity of this report. What part of every single one of you, new or old board member, didn't say, I want to see that contract? Anyone? Nobody thought to look at that? Didn't come to mind. Okay. The other thing is, we want to talk about, well, certain board members want to keep talking about the cost of this report. Yeah, sure, it's unfortunate that we have to spend money on a report, but it's even more unfortunate that this happened to us, that this happened to our community. The truth is, we don't care about the cost of the report. You can never weigh the cost of this report against the cost of the trauma that has happened to this community, and we're sticky hearing about your cost. Maybe if you didn't have to pay so many lawyers to defend you against your gross negligence, we'd have more money in our budget. So let's start looking there when you need the money. So with the, with the report coming out on October 30th, yes, it was supposed to be September 30th, I will acknowledge that with the, the judge's ruling coming out on the 29th, that just might be too much for this community in a span of two days. So as much as it sucks to have to wait maybe for the sanity and health of this community is better to have the break, because we get no breaks. Every week it is something else. Now we have this threat that was called a prank, and it swept under the rug. And we come here, and then we're belittled by our own superintendent and our board and the emails that go out to the community that it was a prank. You know, you gaslight us, and, um, like, we're just making a big deal out of it. This is, it is a big deal. It's our kids, and when you've lost this trust, you haven't gained it back, you haven't earned it, you haven't earned the respect, and then you belittle us. It's the smug, that's what pisses us off. When you sit there and you roll your eyes, when you shrug your shoulders, when you post things on your website that are passive-aggressive. It's all a game. It's all a game, right? We're tired of it. We're all adults in this room, and most of us have kids. This is about our kids. If you truly care about the kids, you're going to do the right thing. You're going to tell everything so this never happens again.
Thank you, Andrea. Mark Gillum?
Is Ron from Varnum still here?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. So I had a question. It was brought to our attention that the district attorneys had counseled the, the staff not to cooperate with the investigation. How did that affect your investigation? Can you come up here so you can hear our questions? Is, is he not the right person to ask? Okay, so our question is, let's, why did the district's attorney go and tell the employees of the school to not cooperate with your investigation? Or with the Guidepost investigation that you're overseeing?
Unless the board agrees with you, I don't think it's appropriate to address the public's opinion.
Can he do that? Will you give him, can you authorize him to answer our questions?
Now, this is really not a time for engagement, Mark. This is a time for you to, to give us your thoughts and your opinions.
Okay, so then we had somebody come from the company who's, who's doing the report, and they gave us an update and told us that the district's attorney were dragging their feet. and they gave us, uh, an update and told us that the district's attorney were dragging their feet, your attorneys are dragging their feet, and now we're all, you know, you want quality and everything. But they're telling us that your attorneys are messing with the investigation. In the last meeting, he stood in front of this microphone and told us that your attorneys are dragging their feet and causing delays, unnecessary delays in this report. Now the report's gonna be dropped in the middle of the school year. You guys, is this, is this part of your plan? Tell me, is this your strategy? Are, are you doing a good job? I mean, I just, I don't even know. And Mr. Donnelly, I appreciate you coming out here, but, um, I think it's about time that we get religious leaders out of our school. And you were in charge when things went down, and you have blood on your hands, too. And you talk about the Legacy Center and your church. You guys called the police on my daughter when I was picking her up and had us surrounded by SWAT teams because you wanted to shut us up?
Mark, this is getting very personal.
This board has gone out of their way to mess with this community? Well, you've gone out of your way to mess with this community. And Dr. Reese, I'm sorry it's so inconvenient for you to be here tonight, but let's think about the families whose children they'll never see again. So, I mean, let's really put our priorities in place. I don't know how you guys can justify sitting here. I have a whole bunch more. Maybe the remainder of my time could be thinking about the children who are murdered on your watch. Or we could think about, how are we gonna hold the people who were accountable that day?
Accountable?
Accountable.
Accountable. Where, where, you put, where does, you, you gave people raises? Nobody was fired? Everybody did a great job? So if you can't hold your employees accountable, and you have no power over your employees, then you're like sitting faces, you, you have no power. And I don't believe that. I don't believe that we're run by other people and organizations. It's just a lack of leadership sitting here at this table right now. And you guys can fix it, or, you know, it just keeps dragging on. So, again, it's time for prosecutors to get in here and open up the things that you're trying to hide.
Okay. Thank you. Administrative clarification?
I would like to make one. Today, at about 3 o'clock, shortly thereafter, I received an email from Detective Barnes, who informed us that the sheriff's department had given us the okay to put out some information relative to the threats that were made, um, earlier in the, in the month. The, um, communication we got was very, um, specific about what we could say. We were told that the sheriff would be letting out more information later, uh, today. But, but if we wanted to let out, and I, I emailed him back and I said, "Are we able to put the information you've just sent me out to our community?" They've been anxious to hear something. And we have not been, um, given any authorization or approval, or really any information from the police because it was an ongoing investigation. And I guess I was told it is still ongoing. I don't know what piece of it is ongoing, but that we were able to provide to our public exactly what was provided to us. So that was the content of our, um, of the communication we sent out. I think it was shortly, uh, this afternoon, early this afternoon. I have also found out that when a 911 call, a 911 call is made, or an okay-to-say tip is given, it goes to the police. If the school is directly, um, uh, involved, stated, referenced in that threat, then the school is notified of that threat. If the threat does not involve the school at all, if the threat is gonna happen somewhere else, or if a threat is made about something that is not specifically stated going to happen in school, like the one we got on, on, uh, Link Day that we reported on, then the school's not even notified, and that is just police procedure. Tomorrow at noon, we meet with the district safety committee. A lot of our police responders will be there, and we are going to review kind of the entire sequence of reports. What is it in a report that means it will come to the school? And what is it in a report that means it won't? So there are some 911 calls that were made, um, relative to that same threat that we did receive, that we weren't given, and the reason we weren't given, we were told is because the school is not specifically named. Once we get this ironed out and we have a better understanding and we get to review it with our police partners, we will put another communication out to the public that will, um, define more clearly what happens to these calls when they come either okay-to-say or 911. What is the, what is the, um, flow chart, so to speak, of when they come in and then what happens to them? Obviously, if it's a police investigation that does not involve the school, then we are not allowed into that investigation. So I just wanted to clarify that, communication that came out today. Thank you.
Yeah, why, why is Barnes in that meeting but didn't involve the school?
A school shooting was part of the threat.
Yeah, and, and Deputy Barnes was assigned the case.
Right.
I, I went to the sheriff's office and they told me that.
Okay. Final board comments?
Okay.
Really? We're just gonna lie like that? All right.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.